Roll call please.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Condit?
Here.
Mr. Malina?
Here.
Mr. Silverston?
Here.
Mr. Walter?
I am here.
Approval of meeting minutes from December tenth, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call on approval of minutes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Epstein.
Any amendments to the agenda that should not be?
Yeah.
Comments from the public, thirty minute maximum time by minutes per person, please say your name and address. Okay. Tabled legislation remains tabled, we'll go right into it. Ordinance twenty-nine, 2013. An ordinance to adopt the amended tax budget for fiscal year commencing January first, 2013, and ending December thirty-first, 2013, and declaring an emergency.
Yes, that one is not prepared. So I apologize, but it's not ready.
Okay. Ordinance thirty, 2013. An ordinance to adopt the appropriations of funds for fiscal year commencing January first, 2013, and ending December thirty-first, 2013, and declaring an emergency.
Is that the same, not ready?
No, you should have those.
We have that.
We do? I don't. Maybe it's somewhere else.
The, I'm sorry, probably a lot of people need an explanation. The appropriation of funds from, this is 2013. We never presented legislation for the 2013 budget, for the appropriations budget. We did for the tax budget, the revenue side of it, but never actually passed the appropriations from 2013. So it would be the original budget from last December.
Has everyone seen it?
I haven't, I didn't get that.
Thank you.
Was this under what?
Yeah.
Okay.
Someone needs to see a copy, Thomas got it here. We're on thirty.
Paul Hathaway, the ordinance twenty-nine.
It was just at first reading, you know, move to second reading if no action is going to be taken on it. What does it have to be passed by?
It should have been passed.
Well, that's why, you know, I mean-
Two thousand and twelve.
I mean, do we need to do it by emergency? I mean, does it need, is someone demanding it by the end of the year, or is there a penalty on it? If you don't get it filed, okay. Just moves to second reading for the agenda.
So just gonna take it off emergency?
It can still be passed by emergency at the third reading, or the second reading.
Well, I mean, we're lead, we're just doing first reading.
Yeah, it just moves to second reading, you don't have to change the caption of it or anything. Okay.
Ordinance thirty-one, 2013. An ordinance to adopt the tax budget for fiscal year commencing January first, 2014, and ending December thirty-first, 2014, and declaring an emergency.
I, suspended rules and passed by emergency? Move, I, yeah, you know what I mean, yeah.
Second.
Roll call on suspension of rules.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Move to pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on emergency passage.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-two, 2013. An ordinance to adopt the appropriation of funds for fiscal year commencing January first, 2014, and ending December thirty-first, 2014, and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the rules and pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on suspension of rules.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Move to pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on emergency passage.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-three, 2013. An ordinance to amend the salary provisions of police department personnel with respect to the chief, effective January fifth, 2014, and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the rules and pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on suspension of rules.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yeah.
Move to pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on emergency passage.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Resolution thirty-four, 2013. An ordinance to amend the salary provisions of police department personnel, effective January fifth, 2014, and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the rules and pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on suspension of rules.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Move to pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on emergency passage.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-five, 2013. An ordinance to amend the salary provisions of Reminderville Fire Department personnel with respect to the chief, effective January first, 2014, and declaring an emergency.
Move.
Should that say January fifth?
For the chief?
Yeah.
No, because he's paid on the monthly basis anyway.
Okay. I'm sorry, go ahead. No, she, she wanted to say something.
Uh, I just want to make sure this is right, yeah. With respect to the chief, I met with the chief today, and he brought in some math that he has done for the last several years, and presented a potential for him being, calculations being misfigured, dating could be cleared back to 2008, and wanted me to, suggested that I change the amounts based on his calculations. I explained to him that part of it was based on what he presented as his budget to council. So he writes in a particular amount for his salary. In the mix, it gets thrown in with the other sal, or the other fireman's wages. And he said that that's how it's happened. He thinks it goes back to 2008, and it has just been misfigured. I explained to him that it might be a better route to take, that we pass it now based on the calculations for the last two years. I went over those with him, he agreed that they are correct, based on what was used in 2011. And then I would investigate, I'd go back and look at legislation and try to figure out if there was a time when it changed. Much like the longevity was misfigured, he's saying if his salary had been misfigured.
What is the nature of the miscalculation?
Yeah.
Misfigure love, like we-
Misfigure, well-
Well, of course.
He's saying we have, we have paid him at the wrong rate.
Correct.
What's he claiming? We've paid him two percent raise each year or something?
We didn't get that specific, like I didn't try to figure out if it was one percent off. It's just, he gave a general description of it's been off for quite some time. And he did the last two years with his own calculations, but it was based on what he presented years ago as his request for his salary. And that somehow in the budgeting process that it got misfigured.
Well, I mean, that's part of my problem was it is, he gets paid a salary, right?
Right.
I mean, how do you miscalculate that?
Because if you look at the actual, look at the ordinance. It has an hourly rate. You get a three percent raise, then you add in his longevity, then you add in his vehicle.
Well, it has a, it has a monthly rate, not an hourly rate, it has a monthly rate.
Right. But this goes back to everybody's being figured differently, which is part of the issue.
His should be simple. His should be, if his salary was, say, thirty thousand dollars last year, and he gets a three percent increase, it should be thirty thousand times one point oh three.
Correct, it should be simple, no.
And that's it. And when you make the resolution, it should say his annual salary is this.
But it hasn't. It is broken down, just as it is now. It's broken down into the monthly rate plus his longevity rate for the month, plus his vehicle allowance for the month.
Isn't that two different things? I mean, isn't that what you're paid and what your salary is? I mean, those are kind of, you know what I mean? Like, there's what you're, the vehicle allowance and all this other stuff, that's-
But it's all rolled, it's all rolled into one.
But vehicle allowance is a perk, it's not, it's not a wage portion.
Correct.
So it, if we raise his wage by three percent, we don't raise his vehicle by three percent.
Right, he wasn't saying-
Correct, it's separate, that's what Mark's saying.
He was not saying that. He asked for a vehicle allowance raise several years ago. I think in 2010, I looked back to the legislation, it was two hundred and fifty as a vehicle allowance. So he asked for a raise in that, you gave it to him. But when you sit down to do these calculations, if you look at that ordinance and the math that has to be done, it's very much like the longevity for the fire department, where if somebody miscalculated and then just gave the numbers and wrote up the legislation, it is, I'm not saying it happened, he's saying it happened. It's po, I'm saying it's possible, just based on what I found in other areas. So I suggested to him that we present the legislation as is.
And then if there's a correction, we can, we can amend this.
I would bring it to you later.
Okay.
Did you ask him, wait it five years?
He said that he, he didn't want to seem, and I'm sure it would have come out much better had he been here to present this, because he does, he is not one to complain, he's not one to make a big deal about things. But he's saying, well, you know, while you're here trying to straighten some things out, let me give you this to take a look at.
That's why it's another five hours, you know?
Yeah, man, that's-
Well, it's gonna make even harder, though, wait five years, and now we gotta, I mean-
Right, now, but what he said-
That's what I'm saying, I mean, like, he just drew this on you in December, you know? This is a rough time, and he's saying, hey, you know, five years ago, I might not-
But he's saying just the salary portion, not the longevity?
Do you have a copy of that legislation?
Or just everything, except the-
It ends up being everything, because his monthly pay is based on those things.
Sorry, Deborah.
I would, I'd like to make a comment.
Now, did you see the way I drafted Mr. Scafides and the fiscal officers? I put an annual salary in there.
And don't include longevity, please.
Well, I'm just, well, they don't give longevity.
I know.
But I'm just saying, you, you know, this, to me, it's easier that way because there were no sense in it. It was twenty-five thousand, or forty-six thousand, or whatever it is. You know, when you break it down like this, it's gonna be a little difficult.
Right, it's easy to make some mistakes.
But it looks like you're giving him a raise on the monthly automobile allowance too, though, because it comes out to an odd number.
It's the same thing that it was-
It's three thirty-eight point eighty-seven.
It's the same thing that it was the last two years.
I mean, why not just make it three forty?
Because it was probably a percentage of whatever he made before.
I, I would-
I think the mistake was probably on our part.
I'm sure it was, but-
I would like to make a comment, I would like to see legislation come to council, that if there's a salary dispute, they have up to one calendar year after the, after that year to straighten it out, and if they haven't, too damn bad.
You know, there are common law, um-
I like that. Yeah, I agree.
Defenses to this, one's called latches, you know, Mr. King knows all about it. But if you wait too long, inequity, a court can find that you've waived your right to make that claim, or to bring that claim up. You know, I've, I've actually raised latches a few times as a defense. It's one of the affirmative defenses you have to raise anyways in court. And it works once in a while, it doesn't work every time, it's not the best theory on the world. But I think if, if, I think it's a decent claim now, because you've gone through four budget processes, he's ahead of a department, you know, his salary, he's in charge of all the salaries and wages in his department, at least to oversee them, wouldn't he be?
Plus, he would know that first pay period that the error happened.
And he-
He would have known then, and he could have had it corrected.
I remember when we gave him a twenty-six, twenty-six thousand dollar a year salary, and all computations were to be made off that, do you remember that, Mario?
Yeah, you make it up twenty this year and take it away for the next year. You give him the extra this year, take it away.
I don't, but that was a long time ago.
Yeah, but, but the, the point is this, is that this stuff has to be dealt with timely. And if our guys are all sitting around figuring how they got screwed on wages, they have far too much time in their head.
It seems like that's all we get from them.
They have too much time. Maybe we should give them a little bit more workload. Maybe we should get rid of our cleaner in the, in the city hall with the firemen maintaining.
They might be doing it on their own time.
I tend to doubt that.
With all those requirements that are going to-
And again, had he been here to present it, it probably would have not come across the same way. He, he just simply said that he didn't feel like he could, he could get resolved to it, which is why he didn't bring it up until now.
How much was he talking that it was off, that he-
He's saying that at this point, his, his annual salary should be forty-two thousand, and the way that I haven't figured, based on the last two years, being figured, it's thirty-seven five, I believe, or thirty-seven eight.
That's pretty significant, over five years.
Sure is. Yeah.
I'm sorry, thirty-nine seven is what his, his figured it currently.
So about two, twenty-three hundred bucks or something?
Yeah.
But that's, you know, probably a little bit less each year.
Right, right.
But still, for five years, it's gonna be at least, you know, seven, eight grand, I guess.
Right, and what he said is that he's not asking for the money from the past here.
He just wants this to be amended.
He just wants this to be caught up, so that now it is where it's supposed to be.
Where it's correct.
And he's right about that.
Yeah.
It'd be all right, well then-
Should have said deadline right at the beginning.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Should have said your latches are getting gone, if I was looking for it.
So, we're gonna go ahead and pass this tonight, so that everything-
And you can do an amendment on it prior to the first pay period, have it effective, you know, you amend this resolution or this ordinance retroactive to whatever date, if it's found that he is correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
But-
But I would suggest this too, that you amend this car allowance thing to make it an even number. I mean, it's not supposed to be changed each year. His salary is supposed to go up the, the appropriate percentage. But the car allowance does, it doesn't work the same way, and-
I may have to find out, but you're right, I think it was a percentage.
I'm sure it was, that's why.
The car allowance was a flat, flat allowance.
It used to be a flat fee.
No, but when we gave him the extra money-
Right, the last time it was two fifty, and now it's a strange number.
A strange number.
It still seems odd that it would be that amount.
Well, we should amend that, you're right.
Yeah.
And we should also draft legislation to, you have a calendar year to-
Even though he's not asking to go back, we should still do something like that.
Basically, he's, if he's saying we, we're doing it this year, he's bringing his claim out before the end of the year.
Right. I think I paid it a while.
It basically amounts to a statute of limitations.
Yeah, basi, yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent.
We could do the same thing with vacation, or something like that.
Yeah.
Sick time.
All right. Did I make the motion already for this?
You started to.
I, I, I make a motion, suspended rules and pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on suspension of rules.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes. Move to pass by emergency?
Roll call on emergency passage.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Do they have any more bomb shots like this coming at us?
Uh-oh.
I think so.
She didn't say no, quick there.
Okay, ordinance.
No. There might be a couple I more I need to counter about, but-
It's not ringing in the door, man.
Yeah.
Ordinance thirty-six, 2013. An ordinance to amend the salary provisions of Reminderville Fire Department personnel, effective January fifth, 2014, and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the rules and pass by emergency?
Second.
Are these right? Has anybody complained about these?
Roll call on suspension of rules.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Move to pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on emergency passage.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes. Ordinance thirty-seven, 2013. An ordinance to increase the annual salary of the village fiscal officer to forty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, effective January fifth, 2014, and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the rules and pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on suspension of rules.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
She's not paying attention. Move to pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on emergency passage.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
She finally got it?
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-eight, 2013. An ordinance to increase the hour, the rate of the maintenance supervisor to sixteen dollars and fifty-five cents per hour, effective January fifth, 2014, and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the rules and pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on suspension of rules.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Move to pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on emergency passage.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-nine, 2013. An ordinance to increase the hourly rate of the maintenance assistance to eleven dollars and fifty cents per hour, effective January fifth, 2014, and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the rules, pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on suspension of rules.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Move to pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on emergency passage.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Ordinance forty, 2013. An ordinance to increase the hourly rate of the custodial, custodial engineer to ten dollars and seventy-seven cents per hour, effective January fifth, 2014, and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the rules, pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on suspension of rules.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-nine, twenty thirteen, an ordinance to increase the hourly rate of the maintenance assistance to eleven dollars and fifty cents per hour, effective January fifth, twenty fourteen, and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the rules and pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on suspension of rules?
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-one, twenty thirteen, an ordinance to increase the hourly rate of the village snowplow operators to eleven dollars and fifteen cents per hour, effective January fifth, twenty fourteen, and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the rules and pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on emergency passage?
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Ordinance forty, twenty thirteen, an ordinance to increase the hourly rate of the custodial engineer to ten dollars and seventy-seven cents per hour, effective January fifth, twenty fourteen, and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the rules and pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on suspension of rules?
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-nine, twenty thirteen, an ordinance to increase the hourly rate of the maintenance assistance to eleven dollars and fifty cents per hour, effective January fifth, twenty fourteen, and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the rules and pass by emergency?
Second.
Roll call on suspension of rules?
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Right.
So, you know.
There's the difference.
There's a little difference.
Yeah.
But that came after engineering did what they did.
Right.
I'm gonna base them.
And they'll be. We had already required it though.
I'll move to table it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's.
There's a motion on the floor.
I second.
We did pass one just like this. Roll call on tabling.
We support the concept.
No, I know we did. I know we did.
Resolution sixty-seven, twenty thirteen.
Wait, you got a second? We need to vote on it, right?
Yes.
I'm sorry, who's second?
Tom.
Tom.
Mr. Selberston?
Yes.
Yes, you do. Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes. Question. Does someone refresh my memory? Liberty Ledges, private or?
No.
Those are dedicated.
Good. Good. So is, uh, parent.
Okay, resolution seventy-two, twenty thirteen. A resolution to adopt the holiday schedule determined by Mayor Alonso for calendar year twenty fourteen and declaring an emergency.
Now, this I have a real issue.
Which one you want to cancel? Or is there any missing?
I think only veterans should have veterans' day off. And none of them do, it seems like. I'm sorry. That, that just irks me, that veterans.
Move to suspend the rules and pass by emergency.
Second.
Roll call on suspension of rules.
We're losing control.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Move to pass by emergency.
Second.
Roll call on emergency passage.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Resolution seventy-three, twenty thirteen. A resolution to authorize and direct the mayor to execute and enter into an agreement with the legal defender's office of Summit County, Ohio Incorporated, for the representation of eligible indigent persons and declaring an emergency.
And, Mr. Carpenter, can you elaborate on this one a little bit? Which one?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three.
We do this every.
This is, this is the, um, public defender's office. Anyone that doesn't have enough money to represent themselves is going to be represented by the public defender's office. We're required to provide for indigent defendants. Indigent being poor.
So we're paying, we're paying our share.
We're footing our share for our defendants. You know, for defendants that are being prosecuted through Reminderville. Uh, it, it, it's only for, uh, those people that are prosecuted, prosecuted under our code. We almost always prosecute under the state code, in which the state pays for those. So I mean, our bill for them is, I would doubt that we've had more than two or three all year. Would that be right?
Yeah.
And, and if, if we have two or three a year, it's a mistake. So it doesn't come up very often, but we, we are required to provide, we either have to provide counsel for them, uh, but the public defender's office will do it when they're charged under our code book.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood it.
Yeah. It's a good question. It's a year-to-year contract. We pass this one every year.
Move to suspend the rules. Pass by emergency.
Roll call on suspension of rules.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Move to pass by emergency.
Second.
Roll call on emergency passage.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Resolution seventy-four, twenty thirteen. A resolution to hire Stacy Cask as administrative assistant slash clerk of council for the village of Reminderville effective January fifth, twenty fourteen and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the rules. Pass by emergency.
Second.
Roll call on suspension of rules.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Uh, I got a question. The resolution says first, but the agenda says fifth.
Yes, we have to change the resolutions based on.
So it should be the fifth?
It should be the fifth. That's the first full pay period.
I just wanted to get, yeah.
It's only if someone's paid monthly, it doesn't make a difference.
Just wanted to get that under record. Yeah, I figured. Okay. Move to pass, oh, did we do that already?
No.
Okay, move to pass by emergency.
Second.
Roll call on emergency passage.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Resolutions seventy-five, twenty thirteen. A resolution to accept the contract with Anthem Blue Cross and Blue Shield for health insurance coverage of qualified employees and elected officials and declaring an emergency.
Okay, I, I'd really like to understand this one. Are we simply accepting the contract in the event that we decide elected officials are to get healthcare insurance? Cause I don't recall us voting on if elected officials. I don't either.
Well, this is where we're, this is where we're doing. You don't have to, you don't have to take it.
Okay, understood. I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable with the village employees and elected officials being clumped together in the same resolution. Has that got to do with group rates or something, or? Let me ask you this, um, what's, what's the, what's the hangup, do you think?
Giving us a big raise, basically.
I.
Potentially.
If I did it in a separate resolution, it's still the same raise.
Yeah, but if I say this, if I say no to it because I don't believe elected officials should have it, which qualified village employees am I saying no to?
Right, that's, that's his issue.
So he'd like a separate resolution.
I, I don't feel, I think we're mixing apples and oranges on this one.
Well, I think now would be the time to discuss whether council is going to, um, uh, make themselves eligible for, uh, insurance benefits or not.
Let, let me ask this question. If this is vote.
It's simple enough, it's simple enough that I could go out there and change this one with just erasing, you know, on Stacy's computer, because that's, I sent him to Stacy and Deborah, erasing off, and council members. It's that easy. It's on Word and that's all it requires. I mean, it's that simple.
If.
I mean, I don't think, I, I don't think, and I talked with, uh, Mr. Malina about it, like, it needs to be talked about. I, I mean, my exact words to Mario was like, well, you can't pass it by yourself. You know, you, you need council's approval on that. So, yeah, is council going to, is that something council is going to approve?
Well, we gotta talk about it.
But I think I made myself pretty clear when we brought it up the first time that I see healthcare benefits as something earned by full-time employees. Whereas we're public servants, by no means, I mean, I know everybody spends tons of time, but this is not my main job, you know? I don't see us as, I'm not comfortable with it.
Okay.
And I don't like it being lumped together with, with our employees.
Could he move to, uh, pass it if, if he felt that way? Could he move to pass it amended?
I think we would need to separate it.
Do you need to?
Uh, you know, if I was gonna do it, I'd probably, um, I would probably just tell you guys, make an amendment to the agenda right here and now. And the amendment would be just basically, uh, because you generally can't amend a special meeting. However, it's just amending that piece of legislation to include qualified employees only. Uh, yeah, go ahead.
If we amend it, then we have to, if the new council is going to have these benefits, we have to have another meeting before the first year. Otherwise, it's a, it could be argued to be an interim tech deal, and I don't want that to happen. I, I would.
Well, any raises.
I would certainly vote against any amendment.
If you're gonna have a problem with that, you're gonna have a problem with the way it's being presented anyways, because, um, any raise that you get had to have already been passed for the new people. It has to be passed before they become elected. Otherwise, it counts as a interim rate. It comes too close to it.
I, I think we've had the discussion. And some people are for it and some people are against it. I'd like, I'd like to see the roll call.
So I'm gonna move to suspend the rules.
I, I got a question.
I, I would prefer to do, if, if you're gonna do it like that, I'd prefer to do two separate pieces of legislation, because if you're one of these people against, um, the public officials getting it, you're gonna vote no. Or, or you've got your hands tied behind your back and you have to pay, say yes because.
You want the others to get it.
Exactly. It affects a lot of people.
But if, but if they voted down, then you can just bring forth the, the.
We're here, we're back here again in two days or three days or four days.
Okay.
But now's a good time to take care of it. What's council's whim?
But if, I guess to Mario, what Mario said originally, if you say, if you vote no, or even if it passes, you have the option to take them or not.
Right.
And, and this isn't something we're unique to.
If you ask this.
No, but.
If I passes, or if Mark says no, if he votes no, or, sorry, if he votes yes, he still has the opportunity to say, I still don't feel comfortable.
No, but he's still voting yes, that he agrees everybody else has the ability to.
Paul.
And that, no, I.
Here's my point. We're gonna have to come back in two days anyway.
Why?
Well, no, I mean, if, if we have to, if we have to redo this.
If you voted no, you know, your public.
Whatever, I mean, two days, five days, whatever. But my, my, I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is this. If, if those people are uncomfortable with it, know that, well, if, if it's voted down, we're gonna create another ordinance and have to vote on it in two days, that'll, that'll be separate. Then they can vote no on this one the way that it is right now. This is why I'm saying I, I think we should move and try to call a vote. And at least then see if they're.
Separated right now.
Because then we can't vote on it.
We could vote on the, we could vote on the one, not the other.
Posted.
We could vote on the.
Posted, people didn't.
Oh, well then, yeah.
We'd be able to vote on the qualify.
Notice, twenty-four hour notice that that was gonna be voted on. Do you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I, I understand what you're saying.
I mean, if it, if it, the people are.
Personally, I would, um, it, it's, it's probably not the perfect way to do it, and it's not illegal, but it might not be perfectly proper. But personally, based on this conversation, I would separate them out right now. I, I would make them two separate pieces of legislation. And I would go ahead and vote on them. I mean, it's an emergency meeting. Uh, it becomes an emergency matter. You know, we are a chartered community. You can make your own, um, procedural guidelines.
Yeah, it's just, it's, it's a sensitive thing that if, if it does pass.
My concern is, I, at the very least, I would like to separate, I would like to at least separate the public officials out of this one. Cause you're, you're almost punishing, first of all, people that have a problem with it and the public employees if, you know, if it's three to three, you're gonna.
At a later date, though, we could pull the public officials out of it if we wanted to.
I'd like to see them separated.
Yeah, I, I think that, that's fair.
Can we amend the agenda right now to separate them and have resolution?
We could at least take off the elected off of this.
And can we make that resolution eighty-one then?
We have resolution eighty-one be.
Yes, I mean, that's what I would do. I would amend the agenda to amend resolution seventy-five, two thousand thirteen.
To just be qualified village employee.
To be qualified village.
How about if we split?
And have resolution eighty-one.
Seventy-five, two thousand thirteen into.
Two, you could make.
Eighty thirteen, which is for, uh, employees, and eighty-one thirteen, which is for elected officials.
Now, the other way you can do it is seventy-five, two thousand thirteen for the employees, seventy-five A, two thousand thirteen for, uh, elected officials. I mean, we've done that in the past where it's been the same numbers on things.
Could I, could I raise a question as well?
Yeah, I can.
Because of the Obamacare, the new laws surrounding that, if you're writing qualified village employees and based on the, um, unclearness of what qualified is in terms of what's full-time, what's not full-time, then it's gonna possibly bring more questions to me about, do I qualify for health insurance or not?
Well, under, that's really not gonna be an issue, because if Obamacare says, or the Affordable Care Act says that, um, you have to provide insurance to part-timers, they become eligible. That's why eligible's in there.
Right.
You know, however the law changes, it's still gonna cover them. Right now, eligible would be full-time only. If the Affordable Care Act kicks in and it's ever defined and it's ever set in stone at some point in time instead of constantly changing, they may become eligible too. So this actually takes into account the changing of the law. That's why eligible is actually in there. If I would have put employees, I would have covered part-time employees, because there's no differentiation. We say eligible because right now only this group is eligible, but at a later date, eligibility may, uh, extend to part-timers under the Affordable Care Act.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Don't, don't we have a working committee right now still trying to decide exactly what, what we mean by full-time?
We have a committee.
It's not working. Right.
That was another issue that, uh, um, Ms. Wardell and I had talked about. We need to get that determined. What is full-time? Twenty, thirty, or forty, or something else?
I, I wrote forty on my, didn't I? That thing I gave you?
Yeah. Well, I mean, if the next council meeting, I'll, I'll make it forty now.
I support you.
That's, I gave her, I gave her some things, but it, it hasn't really gone anywhere.
Just to, I don't know if you know the answer to this, but in, in, with the potential expansion of, of people, would that bring the coverage, or would that bring the cost down at all per beneficiary?
I do know that last year when we discussed healthcare, there was a certain number of employees that if you got it to that point, it could bring down the overall rate. I would have to investigate exactly what that amount is. How many employees, how it would affect them.
And you know, part-timers do count against your employees. You wouldn't think it does, but for the Affordable Care Act, they count a percentage of an employee, maybe a half or whatever. So, you know, you might think, well, you have to have fifty employees for it to kick in. And you might have, you know, seventy part-timers or something, but they all count against it.
Let me ask a procedural question. If this, say this passes.
Which one?
Both, they both pass. Is open enrollment, we would have to decide by December thirty-first whether or not we, we want to be on it?
Open enrollment is actually already passed. There's, there has to be a change in events or a change in, I forget the exact terminology, right?
Need a life-changing.
Which, which we would be having. So, so even if we vote yes, how would we be able to get on it?
No, you would, because actually, when I talk to my, uh, I, I just asked my company about it. It's like, well, hey, if, if we do have health insurance benefits for the village, she, it's like having a child, or it's, it's an event. It's a life event.
It's what they call if you have.
It's like getting a new job.
So how long would we have to decide?
A month.
Probably a month.
A month?
Yeah.
That's what my company said. They have a month, I have a month from like January first to probably send in the, something that's saying, the village is gonna be offering health insurance, or, you know, or I can't, uh, cancel my old one.
I was just curious, because I know most of the time, December thirty-first is the end, or, or November thirtieth, whenever you're. Okay. But I, I, I think we do need to separate it, though. Just, I think to be fair, to be fair to Mark, I think we need to.
Given that we do separate it, does it have to be passed by emergency?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
And reason being is, like I said, I'm, I'm pretty, from the information I got from the people that I talked to, you have to, uh, it has to happen usually within thirty days of that change, which the change for us would be January first.
Right.
All right, so then I need a motion to amend the agenda to break out resolution seventy-five into seventy-five and seventy-five A.
We lost our.
I make a motion to separate.
That's okay, it's on the tape. And seventy-five is gonna be, it's a sedentary resolution, no, yeah. Seventy-four is.
Resolution seventy-five, two thousand thirteen. You separate it into qualified village employees and elected officials.
Do you want to repeat that for Deborah, please?
So we're gonna do seventy-five and seventy-five A. Seventy-five is the qualified employees.
Okay.
And seventy-five A is going to be the elected officials. Very good.
The motion is disclitted into two parts. Then we'll have to be, as each part.
Okay, and both of them need a suspend the rules.
Well, this is just.
Right now, we're just making the motion to amend the agenda.
Right now, we're just making the motion to amend the agenda. Then we're.
Then we'll do suspension and then we'll do.
Then we'll need.
Right.
Do you amend the agenda once?
Just once.
Right. Yeah, give her time. This isn't pre-printed.
I'll second, I'll second your agenda.
Roll call when you're ready.
Okay, who?
The motion was made by Mr. Carter.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I got it. Uh, Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes. Now I will read resolution seventy-five, twenty thirteen. A resolution to accept the contract with Anthem Blue Cross and Blue Shield for health insurance coverage of qualified village employees and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the rules and pass by emergency.
Second.
Roll call on suspension of rules.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Move to pass by emergency.
Second.
Roll call on emergency passage.
This was for the qualified village employees.
Right.
Maybe.
Mr. Walter?
Don't mess with the board.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Okay, resolution seventy-five A, twenty thirteen. A resolution to accept the contract with Anthem Blue Cross and Blue Shield for health insurance coverage of elected officials and declaring an emergency.
Second. Oh, move to suspend the rules, pass by emergency.
Second.
Sorry.
Roll call on suspension of rules.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Move to pass by emergency.
Second.
Roll call on emergency passage.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
No.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Resolution seventy-six, twenty thirteen. A resolution to accept the bid of Love Insurance for Village Property Casualty Insurance for a sum not to, not to exceed forty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and declaring an emergency.
Yes.
What did I say?
Sixty-two. What's your agenda wrong or?
No, I just, I'm sorry. Forty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars even.
Move to suspend the rules, pass by emergency.
Well, now I'll second since it's four sixty-one.
Right.
Roll call on suspension of rules.
Sixty-two over. Right.
Okay, this was seventy-six?
Yes.
Correct.
Who made the motion?
Uh, yeah, me.
Okay, Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Good times.
Yeah, like straight.
Huh?
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Really put Tom's name straight down.
Could've just typed one.
Yeah. Move to pass by emergency.
Second.
Roll call on emergency passage.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
And Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Resolution seventy-seven, twenty thirteen. A resolution to amend resolution eighty-three, twenty twelve, titled, A Resolution to Hire Croc Esser Engineering, Inc. as Village Engineer, commencing January first, twenty thirteen, through December thirty-first, twenty fifteen, and declaring an emergency.
This is, uh, I have a question. Things are, keep passing. Is this the?
That's the contract. Yeah, it should have been sent to you outbox as well. Did everyone receive it?
No.
I don't think so. Did it?
I think the difference in here, Matt, is you're just adding the building department.
It's part of the resolution.
Right. Um, I guess, my only concern, do we already, and I, and this is my memory showing, um, we've already contracted with them through twenty fifteen?
Yeah, it was extended three years.
Yeah, we did it three years last year.
That'd be a way to pay attention.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I mean, I guess, I'm sure I voted for it at the time, I just can't.
Cause he held his price.
Yeah, it kept the rate the same.
Yeah.
The rate the same?
Yeah.
No increase.
So. Right, except, except for this increase that we're about to do.
It's not.
No, I know, and I know the reason for it. I guess, I just, um, had forgotten that we have, if anybody else wants to see the.
Okay, could you?
Card copy. I, I guess I was, my concern was that we were signing into twenty fifteen and what the, uh, damages would be, for some reason, because there has been, there have, or I'm sorry, there have been some grumblings here and there about the way certain people handle things on occasion, and I just, you know, I'm not gonna be here next year, but I, I just, God only knows if, what, what if you decided you wanna get out of this thing, now what kind of damages are we talking about?
The outlaws. Is there an outlaws?
Is there an outlaws?
There's always a.
Negligence, you know, if he messes something up, there's always debt provision, you know, you know that.
I know, I know, I just.
But, you know, when he submits his contract to us, he's not putting in an out provision, eh, you know, if you have a broken fingernail, you can get rid of me, you know, if I don't make the streets level enough for you, blah, blah, blah. So he'll put that in there. But if he, if he's negligent, or you think he's, uh, some fraud in charging or something like that.
I don't think there's any fraud in that. I.
Yeah.
I don't think.
This contract is not, this contract.
I'm good.
When you pass this three-year one, it's the same thing as this updated one. So, you know, if you didn't have that question, then why are you having to?
I don't know. Those were in my mailbox. I thought you gave them to me and you wanted to be, be close friends with me. Well, then I'll move to suspend the rules and pass by emergency.
Taking my job away.
Seventy. Roll call, suspension of rules.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Move to pass by emergency.
Second.
Roll call on emergency passage.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Resolution seventy-eight, twenty thirteen. A resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Summit County Combined Health District for Stormwater Services for the year twenty fourteen through twenty eighteen and declaring an emergency.
Move to suspend the rules, pass by emergency.
Second.
Roll call on suspension of rules.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Move to pass by emergency.
Second.
Roll call on emergency passage.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Resolution seventy-nine, twenty thirteen. A resolution to amend resolution one eighty-two, twenty-ten, amendment three, for work associated with the two thousand eleven paving program and waterline replacement project, and declaring an emergency.
I have a, I have information about that if anybody.
Yeah, I, I didn't see an exhibit A on that, and it says.
Uh, what?
That's exhibit A in her hand.
Is that exhibit A?
It is.
What's, what's the deal?
This is the one where.
There's the, um, additional bidding and additional work, that's all it said on there. You know, to me, I would probably do change orders, but for some reason, Jean likes to do amend the contract. I don't know if it has to do with the funding that you receive, or what, but it's. In essence, it's a change order.
Yeah, that's what I figured it was, a change order.
Although the work's, I don't know what the work was, you're not gonna be able to tell from looking at that. But, um, I don't even know if it has to do with my emergency tonight, but someone said my emergency, when they read it.
Well, it says in declaring an emergency.
Oh, on the agenda it does?
It doesn't on the agenda.
Doesn't mine.
Doesn't on mine.
Doesn't on mine.
Did you get the update at three thirty-seven P M?
I, I got the latest one.
Mine does not.
Mine did not.
It says on the, are you in your box again?
I am.
It should say.
I am.
I am in my box.
Thank you, Deborah.
I hope you won, thanks.
Yes, mine does not.
I can say that.
I like to think of myself more as.
Mine doesn't.
I like to think outside.
Interesting.
So basically, the difference is a hundred nineteen thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Not some change.
Jean gave an explanation of where those extra costs came in. The additional bid item work, extra work required. And the way it was explained to me, that there were basically three items. One is they had to move the road over. Two, they had to.
Talked to us about.
Uh, homeowners were complaining about. The way there wasn't pipe laid in the ditch.
Right.
So they went back and corrected that. And then, when they originally started the project, they didn't have the actual plans drawn up, or, or when the project was okayed. There was no plan. And so, when they got into the job, they found out there was, I believe, six hundred feet of waterline that they didn't know didn't already exist. And they had to lay six hundred extra feet of waterline.
Are we getting reimbursed, right, at a hundred and nineteen?
There, there's a Plan A and a Plan B. Plan A is to go to John Evanson as a developer, because apparently that waterline.
Sorry.
Was his responsibility. Plan B is that those pieces of property where they had to add that will be assessed. There's nobody living there right now, but when they sell the, the lots, they would assess the property.
How many lots are there, five?
I'm not really sure.
I think there's five, and if it's five lots, that's another roughly twenty-four thousand dollars left. That's really gonna make them sellable.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's not gonna be hotcakes. Yeah.
But, that was included in the home price.
Well, the reality is, is that the work is already finished.
Then there's a chance we'd actually get paid.
And there are. There is a pay application already submitted on my desk. That I haven't written a P O for, and paid them, because we would be over the original amount.
Well, you gotta remember.
If I read it correctly, Mr. Evanson was responsible for putting in these waterlines, and he just didn't wanna put them in yet.
Yeah, I don't know why, you know, that, that, the first two items, I certainly understand, but why did we put the extra waterline in?
For him.
For him.
Right.
And you might not be.
That's what I didn't get.
I think it was to close the loop, but the fact of the matter is, is that a fire engineer statement, the waterline had to be put in at that time, we certainly had to play against Mr. Evanson. To insist that he pay up for what he was obligated to do, and just didn't wanna do yet.
And that was, my question is, where are we on the initiation of Plan A, anywhere, do you know?
Uh, nowhere, we're still on the Plan A from previous request, right?
So can we at least just make it the first reading, and if we have to, then maybe the first meeting in January?
Get more info, find out.
I think it's time to struggle a little, but, yeah.
And you, you do have to remember, if we assess the five properties, it wouldn't be the whole hundred and twenty grand.
No.
It'd just be whatever that extra pipe cost. Part of this is widening, moving the road over, and all, we would have to know the difference. You wouldn't assess them the whole hundred and twenty.
About eighty grand, based on the information.
It'd still be that much, just for the six hundred feet. Okay, so we're much better.
First round, can we just postpone it till the next meeting?
Uh, there hasn't been a motion on this yet, has there?
No.
No.
You don't have to postpone it, you just move it to say, it just moves to second reading, you just read it.
Yeah.
And, and, and Deborah, um, if you would just pass on to Stacy, this should say on each one of these, what reading it is. You know, this one was first reading. Absolutely, cause you can pass out legislation at third reading, even if it's by emergency. You know, it doesn't matter what the caption says, whatever reading it is, because it puts the, the public on notice as to what reading it is.
Okay.
The, the fact that it says, and declare an emergency, doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna pass at the first or second reading. It just means that it's gonna become effective immediately when it is passed.
Right, we'll have to wait the.
Okay.
Now, I realize that you, this doesn't say it, but my agenda does.
Yeah, see, my agenda doesn't, and yours doesn't either, yeah.
That's right.
Alright.
That's a good start for the new year.
You got one more?
Okay.
No posting the reading.
Yeah.
Resolution eighty, twenty thirteen, a resolution confirming the mayor's appointment of Sam Scafidi as supervisor of public service, and declaring an emergency.
Mine says service director, right?
Yeah, um, Stacy actually put this in, um, yesterday, uh, before I had the information on it. So when I, um, emailed it in this morning, so obviously the caption on the agenda's different, but the first reading is what he just read, and that's the official document.
Move to suspend the rules, pass by emergency.
Second.
Roll call on suspension of rules.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Move to pass by emergency.
Second.
Roll call on emergency passage.
Question?
Yes.
Is this a part-timer, full-time?
It is part-time.
Very good. Thank you.
How many hours is that?
Twenty hours.
See, my, my box doesn't have eighty, it doesn't have thirty-one, it doesn't have all those in it.
Okay, where?
Well, I, I made it pass, pass by emergency.
Exactly.
Roll call on emergency passage.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes. Old business. New business.
Um, well, since it passed for us to have insurance, will we be getting packets that outline what the benefits could be, and a book of doctors, and?
What you will get from me is a, an email.
Yeah, right.
An email that will have, um, there's a, I think they call it fire form. There's, uh, it takes you to a website where you go and fill out a form.
A lengthy form?
Yes, to enroll.
I don't necessarily want to enroll, but.
Right, you want, want the information about what is available to you. We don't have a book.
What the deductibles are, all that stuff.
Yeah, I can just fill that.
Okay.
Any other new business?
I'd like to thank Mr. King for his four years of service. I know some of us were scared at the beginning of the four years, nobody knew who he was, and, and it was, it was a pleasant surprise.
Waited out, we waited outside.
Although.
Yes.
Speaking of which, um, should we have an executive sec, executive session to discuss personnel?
I wasn't done thinking.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Jumping ahead.
I wanna thank everybody, um, I had a great time. I also would like to publicly apologize for, um. What has been a very rough year for me. And, uh, and one of the reasons why I, I didn't re-up and had the problems that I did trying to. So, um, I just wanna thank everybody for putting up with me, um, this last year. Did not finish the way I wanted, wanted to, and, uh, hopefully in a few years, I will be in a better place and maybe come back, but, uh, I'm just. It was just too much on my plate right now, so I just wanted to thank everybody. You guys have been a great group of people to work with, I love the village, I love everybody here, and, uh. I've been very blessed to be a part of this, so just thank you very much.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, man.
Yeah, that looked a little bit blunt.
Off the cliff.
Okay, as far as the executive session on that point, we have till January thirty-first, thirtieth, at that point.
We don't wanna wait till last minute, though.
Yeah, no, but we can do it first meeting, January.
I thought it had to be done before January.
No, because we have thirty days from the start of the voting.
Doesn't expire until.
Do we wanna just shortly discuss, maybe give us more to think about, maybe? Just discuss for a few minutes tonight?
Can we discuss it in open, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can totally discuss.
Or we could just turn the tape off and make this an executive.
You, you can discuss it in open.
Yeah, you can totally discuss it in open.
Yeah.
I would prefer to discuss it in executive session, though. So if we stay in here, just turn off the, I did.
You're going to.
Yeah, we.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
To an executive session?
No, just to adjourn.
Just to adjourn. Second.
Roll call, please.
But we can't discuss it once we do that.
Yeah, we can.
No, and, yeah, we can, because.
Alright, everyone, stop.
Let's just go to executive.
Yeah, you can't officially discuss it if we're not in a meeting.
Chat amongst friends?
No, you're not allowed to do that.
Three or more.
Yeah, you can't.
I need you to go to executive session.
So, so you'd have to make a motion.
But we can.
Grab a second?
Second.
Roll call on going to executive session.
Who made the motion?
Ed.
Okay, Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Malina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverstone?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Alright.